Ladies and gentlemen, let me have your attention please. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Millville Special Town Meeting for June 29th, 2017. We all rise and face the flag and place the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get underway here. Uh, Mr. Chairman and Board of Selectmen, would you introduce your members please?
To my right is, uh...
Give your microphone please.
Sorry. To my right is our Town Administrator Jennifer Callahan. We have our Chair...
Okay, uh... Speak right into it gentlemen.
We have Brian Kublai Page, Jennifer Dean-Wing, and Andrew Elwood.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and Board of Finances, would you introduce your members please?
Yeah, I'm Paul Leett, Chairman of the Finance Committee. To my left is Mike Foster, Vice Chairman, Clerk Brian Pacheco, and to his left is Erica Blake.
We also have sitting here is our illustrious Town Clerk, Diane. Okay, and we also have distinguished guest Representative Furoz, our State Rep, sitting over there. Stand up, thank you both. We appreciate you being here tonight. Okay, before we go any further, after our last town meeting, I felt that I needed to explain some things to you. Number one is, the Town Moderator rules on all questions of order, period. And the Moderator's decision is final, okay? You may ask about what authority, that's a mass general law. And you can go to their website, under General Laws, and look it up. I believe it's in Chapter 39. This town operates under Town Meeting Times, the rules. We do not operate under Robert's Rules of Order. We operate under Town Meeting Times. We have, for as long as I can remember, and attending these meetings, that's been for 29 years now. At our last meeting, I am sorry to say, that we had individuals who were very rude, interrupting people. Ladies and gentlemen, that will not be tolerated in the future. You interrupt somebody, you become disruptive, I'll ask you to leave. If you don't leave, I'll have a police officer remove you. I do have that authority. We are here, and we're going to listen to people and their opinions respectfully. If you don't agree with their opinion, that is fine. You don't have to. But I demand that you be respectful to them. They have a right to say something also, whether you agree with it or not, okay? We're here to work together for this town, the betterment of this town, the betterment of everybody that lives in this town. Time limits. The Moderator sets the time limits on the people who are talking. Since I have been moderator, I have consistently allowed people the latitude to express their opinion without cutting them off too short. Once I feel they are becoming repetitive and saying the same thing over, I will interrupt them and I will stop them, okay? Again, I respectfully ask and also demand, if a person sits at this mic speaking, let them speak. Keep your comments to yourself until you have raised your hand and asked to be recognized by the Moderator. I will recognize you and you can come down and you can talk. And you can disagree with that person all you want to, and express your opinion. We need to be able, all of us, to be able to express our opinion. When we hear differences of opinions from everyone, we become better informed, we make better decisions, more intelligent decisions. And in this way, we can move our town forward in a positive manner, okay? Thank you. Somebody have a question?
Uh, Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Could you clarify, how much time does someone want to speak?
As I said, I usually let them continue until they start being repetitive and then I'll cut them off. But I like to keep somewhere around three minutes, three more, four minutes, a little longer there. Yes?
It's supposed to breathe approximately three minutes to speak.
Give or take, yes, okay? You can speak less, you can speak a little more. If I see you going over too much, then I'll stop you, okay? But I try to give people enough time to express themselves, all right? Sometimes it's hard to say what you want to say in a three minutes, okay? All right, Article number one, transfer of funds, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $298,429 from free cash to the stabilization fund or take any other action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the town will vote to transfer the sum of $298,429 from free cash to the stabilization fund.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. There being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor, stand up please. Ladies in the back, can I bring you forward down here to count please? While the ladies are counting, I'm going to ask, is there anyone that is in the middle or these side rows that is a non-registered voter? If there is, I need you to come down front here. Is anybody standing that is a non-registered voter? You can hold up your orange card too, also, if you want to identify everybody. Everybody stand up. Ladies, hold on, you're going to have to do it again. All those opposed and want to vote no, stand up. The no's have it. Thank you. If there's a vote, not so many. the sum of $104,750 to supplement the amount voted in Article 10 of the May 8th, 2017 Annual Town Meeting warrant for the FY '18 Blackstone Millville Regional School District budget and to meet this appropriation by transferring $104,750 from the stabilization fund or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, Jane Reggio, 7 Diana Circle, Millville resident. I would like to amend this motion, uh, to strike the stabilization fund and insert from free cash.
You can write it.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am. You know always have a thing for you. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second please? What's your name?
Kara Kirby, 8 Dollar Court, I second the motion as amended.
All right, there's amendment on the floor for Article number two, and I'll re-read it with the amendment. Appropriation of funds, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $104,750 to supplement the amount voted in Article 10 of the May 8th, 2017 Annual Town Meeting warrant for the FY '18 Blackstone Millville Regional School District budget and to meet this appropriation by transferring $104,750 from free cash or take any other action in relation thereto. I think I see somebody back there. Ah, good boy.
Yeah, should I?
Keep it facing right there where you're, right there. If you turn it too far, it'll get the feedback on it.
Okay, where do you want me?
Right there.
Okay. Ellen Bowen, 98 Providence Street, Millville, Mass. I noticed that our Finance Committee didn't second this, second the motion, and I'd like to hear from them because I kind of depend on their opinions because they work very, very hard on behalf of the taxpayers of this town, and I think they have a lot of knowledge that we should know about. Ma'am, thank you.
All right, I can answer that very simply. Our position on May 8th of 2017 hasn't changed from then until today. Our town is still in the same financial situation we were on, on May 8th. It would be fiscally irresponsible to spend an additional $104,000 out of our savings account. And I understand that the argument is that, oh wow, we have all this free cash. Well, free cash isn't exactly free, and basically, our intent at the May 8th meeting, as was asked of us directly by a school committee member, was to put our free cash, once it got certified, back into our stabilization account to bring us back up to a relatively minimal level going forward in our stabilization account, but above the 5% threshold that we're so desperately trying to reach. So, basically, in a nutshell, our financial situation hasn't changed any, so, you know, voting on this is still voting against the financial situation we had on May 8th.
Anyone else? Yes, yes sir. Yes, yes, come down and identify yourself, your name and your address please.
Peter Mars, 21 Hill Street, Millville. I'm very familiar with the process, educational process, in both Connecticut and upstate New York and the Adirondacks, since having spent almost 40 years in it doing budgets, whatever. And in both systems, they were regional school districts, and once a budget was passed, you had to live within that budget. The administration had to see to it, so did the Boards of Education. I have two questions. If the budget is passed, why come back for more money? And two, what is this money specifically geared for?
Paul, you want to take that?
I'll take the first half of the question because I won't speak to the second half of the question, but, um, basically, the way that the agreement is written with our particular region, Blackstone Millville region, is if one town votes a higher amount proportionately than the other town, then the other town is required to come back to its people within 45 days and ask again. If, in fact, we didn't come back within the 45 days, it would be an automatic yes to the school. So, so this is our opportunity to make our case again and reinforce the numbers that we voted on on May 8th, and then take it from there going forward.
Same, yeah, you have to follow up. Please, you have to come up. Hard to hear back in the back.
Pete, I believe your second part was, where is the money going to?
Yes, if you present a budget and you're going to live within that budget, what do you need the additional monies for?
I'm going to have somebody else answer that part of the question for you. Our Chairperson of the School Committee?
Yes sir, this time I will address the audience as the Chairperson of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, and then I have a clarifying question. This budget, when the School Committee first and initially certified its budget, it was in addition to the money that we're asking for today. It was actually higher than this amount. When we met on May 8th, the certified budget that was submitted to both towns by the School Committee was significantly higher than the money that we're asking for today. That money was then reduced by, well, not voted on, by the Town of Millville and reduced by the Town of Blackstone. So, the School Committee then went and cut $140,000 out of its original certified budget, making our cuts to the budget that was first presented by the leadership team to the School Committee of over $600,000. If we vote to get this money today, if we vote this money from free cash, then we are not only getting $104,750 from the Town of Millville, but $280,000 from the Town of Blackstone, which has already been voted on. So, it's a $384,000 hit to the certified budget. So, it's the budget that was originally presented to both towns, it's trying to meet those numbers, not trying to add more into something, trying not to have to reduce any further.
Come back up, sir.
I don't mean to be redundant, but I don't think my question was answered. I understand there's been an increase asked for, my specific question was, what is this money to be used for?
76% of the certified school budget funds personnel in the school district and funds health and insurance and purposes like that, and then the other 24% is maintenance and supplies and curriculum and those kinds of things. And that was the original budget, so we're not asking for more, we're asking for our original amount.
Anyone else have a question? Yes ma'am, come down, identify yourself and your address please. Just pull it right off the stand and hold it right up to your mouth. There you go.
Kathy Stierman, 28 Boulder Court. I have a question for the Finance Committee. Mr. Leett, you said that the town is still in the same situation we were on May 8th. How is that possible if we were finally got a certified number from the state, which is why we're all here, because that money was finally certified?
My statement about us being in the same financial situation is that we're still funding our general operating budget from reserves. We're not funding from our annual income, we're funding it from one-time money savings account. What our intent tonight was, was to replenish some of that stabilization money that we had already used on May 8th. $298,000 sounds like a lot of money, it's really not. And especially with the capital projects we have looming and other issues, and I won't bore you with the details, but, but basically, we are still in a situation where we are funding our budget with reserve money, and it's not sustainable.
Isn't that what we've done every single year?
No.
We, usually, we move money over to the stabilization fund.
But not every single year, it's only within the last eight to 10 years that we've been in a situation where we've been on a decline. And basically, as Mr. Raposa has stated on multiple occasions, it goes against our reserves and against our general fund, which has been going down in big chunks, what, $176,000 on average a year, our general fund has been going down. Right now, we've reached the point of non-sustainability, for lack of a better way to put it. Next year, if this trend continues, even with this money, next year, we're already starting with an over $400,000 deficit. We've already looked forward to the future and started planning, and that's, that's with this. So, there's some things that have got to change, and some tough decisions are going to have to be made, and we're going to have to look at rightsizing our income and rightsizing our budgets and fixing this going forward, but as of right now, it's, it's come to the wall, you know? We've been kind of creeping up to it up to this point, and the Finance Committee has continuously warned the townspeople at every single meeting that we use the reserve money to pay or use free cash to pay for things, that this was coming. We staved it off to this point, but we can't stave it off anymore, this is it.
I just have a problem with our kids paying for it, that's all. It, the gentleman just before said, what, you get to a budget, you stay within the budget. And I understand the budget is tight for the town, it's, it's tight at home also, it's tight at school, but I don't understand why the school is always the one tightening instead of the town, and I know the town is also, but I said, we fight over this every single year, and I still have two kids in this school, and I'd like to keep the two kids in the school.
And, and just about everybody on the stage says kids or grandkids.
And, and I understand that.
And let me, let me just, just give you a number. If the school gets this additional money, their amount for this year compared to last year would have gone up 8.98% from what we paid last year. It's not the school suffering. They're, they're still hitting us for a pretty significant percentage, and the BMR School District alone is close to 50% of our budget. So, our total, our total increased levy this year was $119,000. With this additional money, the school is getting $230,000. So, you know, we made some difficult choices in our, in our other budgets too, but to say that the school is suffering and the kids are suffering, and, I mean, the, the school also gave a pretty generous increase to their teachers this year too, which is...
By contract.
Right, it's contract, you're right, but it's a negotiation.
It wasn't even the, the, I, I understand that, I'm just saying, it seems like it's always the kids who have the problem. Thank you.
Yeah.
Erin Binaco, 11 Albert Drive. My first question is, the, before any town meeting, there's an open hearing for FINCOM that was held last week, correct?
Yes.
Could you let us know what the recommendations were for Article 2 as written before we amended to transfer from stabilization from that open hearing?
The rec, I'm glad you asked that question, because there's obviously a misconception as to what the Finance Committee voted on. The Finance Committee voted to bring this before the town and let the town vote for it, because it's not our purview to make this decision all on our own. We can make our recommendation.
Correct, you have a recommendation for every article.
Right, our recommendation was to...
Was yes or no?
Encourage, to have the article be on the warrant. There was a, there was a disconnect in what the intent for that motion was, but the intent of the motion was to, you know, have it come to...
So, at every, at our annual town meeting, you have an open hearing and you vote on every article.
Mm-hmm.
You're voting just to bring it to the voters? You're not voting on whether you recommend the money or not?
Typically, we're voting to recommend the money, you're absolutely correct.
So, you changed your role last week? Because you voted yes, correct?
Again, it was, it was a mistake by a new Finance Committee.
Excuse me, just a minute, right. I want to say this to everybody. We, we discussed on the four corners of the article. You're getting into an area outside of that. Now, we're starting to talk about a meeting.
Well, it usually, it usually listed on the article, whether FINCOM and Selectmen approve or disapprove.
I understand that, but you're getting into a discussion about what took place at that meeting.
Okay, so was it, was it approved by FINCOM or not?
The Finance Committee does not support giving an additional $104,750 to the school.
Okay, and then the other point I'd like to clarify is, um, again, Mr. Leett just stated that our budget, that Millville's funding an additional 8%, um, our school budget that we originally certified was only a 2.5% increase overall, over last year. Millville's contribution is dictated by the state of Massachusetts, that is called Chapter 70. That is not us asking them for an 8% increase. So, I believe it was a little misleading when he just said it's an 8%. Our budget is not increased by 8%. And as far as any teachers' contract and any generous raises, we're already operating on that this year.
We're not, we're not getting into contracts.
I'm answering the last question.
No, no, you don't have to, no.
We're already operating on that this year. That's not, we're not trying to cover that with this vote.
We're not getting into contracts.
Let me, can I just make one, one quick statement, all right? Our responsibility here in this room is to, for the finances of the Town of Millville. The Town of Millville's contribution to the school, if this $104,000 is, is voted on tonight, is 8.98% over last year's contribution. And not all of that is Chapter 70's increase. And not all of that is Chapter 70's increase. Not all of that is the state minimum contribution increase.
I totally agree with you, but to be fair, it should not be made to look like we, the school committee, who has the responsibility of overseeing the school budget, are asking the town for the 8%. Our total operating budget will not be increased by 8% if this is voted on tonight. We reduced our budget after the May 8th meeting. We recertified and we are about 2% increase from the year prior.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or say something? Yes, sir.
Jerry Finn, 47 Grove Street. Seems like we're in the same spot as we were past year. I'm not construting here, it's the year before and the year before that too. I don't know. Where I come from, usually people work with a plan. And what I'm advocating here, if I could, Mr. Chairman, is that there be a scheduled, planned meetings, and not just meetings, but actually come out with results and have that happen over time before we get to this position every single year for the last three or four years. We've been in a position to raise the money beyond what they've asked, and that's fine. I don't have a problem if it makes sense. Then let's do it. But I'm not convinced that the finance committee, who we trust, is not convinced of it, then obviously, there's a disconnect between the meeting. Now, I would like to see that we have a regular schedule of meetings that take place, I don't know, something crazy like October, so that we don't get in this position each and every year. Because I'm getting tired of it.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, come on in.
Raisha Marzolo, 44, Chestnut Hill Road. I guess I'd like to ask the school committee, if the 104 is not given, which I'm in favor of, what do we do with that? I have a child that's a kid, so I need to get that money.
I'm trying to decide what to answer that or I can't answer that. I'm going to take a stab at it if I can. If for whatever reason, you were to vote down the $104,000 and what, $750? Then what's going to happen is, we're going to have a super town meeting. What that means is, is that the school committee is going to call for a super town meeting. And the towns of Blackstone and Millville are going to come together in one place. And this is going to be, they're going to have a big vote on this budget. And whatever ends up happening, ends up happening. If the majority approves it, then it's a done deal. If they don't, now you got a different, I think, you have to go back to the school committee and then they have to do something. Anyone want to correct me if I'm wrong?
They can opt not to have that super town meeting.
Well, the school committee can opt not to have a super town meeting. And I'm not going to go say anything more about that. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Can I just, can I clarify? Is that what you want to know, or do you want to know specifically what would we cut if we had a kid on? That did not answer the question.
Okay.
So I believe the question is, what would we cut if we had to cut $104,000? What? Again, it would not be $104,000. If we don't get the $104,000, it will be $384,750. Now, can we cut special education services? No. So if your child is getting special services, that's mandated by law. And that's one of the unfunded mandates that Kevin's going to help us with someday, somewhere, if we all live long enough. And just stick with it, Kevin. So there's certain things that we can't cut. So, I don't know. But what can we cut? Well, we cut all the things that the parents have to already pay for anyway. We cut athletics, and you have to pay to play. So the kids that won't play are the kids that can't afford to pay. And we cut music, which we all know, in this community, we have signs around that says we have a championship music program. And students have to pay to play in the band. And some people would say, well, that's okay. But the kids that'll lose out are the kids that can't afford it in the first place. And the kids that can, the tax burden to them, think about it, because that's another tax on them. That's where you cut. And you cut, we've already cut custodians. We've limited the custodians in the building. We're down. And unfortunately, the head one here is not from Millville, so he can't speak to you on this issue. But we've already cut that. We've cut to bare minimums. We don't have supplies for teachers. You know, you all get the list at the beginning of the school year. I mean, you're spending so much of your money now anyway to support the school, and you have to spend more.
Any other questions?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm having a problem with percentages. I'm hearing that the actual cost is a little over 2%. And I'm hearing it's 8.7 or 8.9%. The cost of living is less than 2/3 of that 9%. I don't know where we stand. Is it actually 3%? Is it actually 5%? And the prior year was 2%. Seems like rampant growth of money somewhere, unless we've had a huge increase in staff, huge increase of state mandates and so on and so forth. So I need to know for a proper vote, what the actual percentage is.
What we've actually had is a decrease in state funding. The school budget is essentially $22 million. I'm using round numbers, so forgive me, but is essentially $22 million. $10 million of that is Chapter 70 money, which is the state-funded money. If the total school budget of $22 million goes up 2%, 2.5%, but $10 million of the income to fund that doesn't go up at all, which it didn't, then the balance is responsible for the difference. So the difference of the 2.5% of the $10 million plus the difference of that. And in this particular year, our state minimum contributions for Millville went up. Blackstone's went down a little. So there's a little bit more of a discrepancy there in our percentage. And then, you know, the additional contribution is at the 28% to 72%, give or take, of the student population. So that's why when Ms. Reggio says, you know, the 104 translates to 380, it's because we're on the hook for 28% of that additional funding. Blackstone's on the hook for the balance. But what it translated for Millville, because our budget is only a little over $6 million, which is relatively proportionately small in the grand scheme of things, it translated down, their initial ask, translated down to 10.22% for the town of Millville. What we voted on at the May 8th meeting was a 4.6? 4.94% increase over last year's number. And our contribution to the school is not just the supplemental. It's, you know, our total contribution's about $3 million. So it went up to 4.94, and if this votes tonight, it's going to translate to 8.98. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Anyone else have a question?
Mr. Moderator? I just, I have, well, one thing. I think it was about two years ago that we asked for a business plan. We asked for a five-year projection to avoid these situations. We're sitting here two years later with nothing in hand from the superintendent or from the school committee as to how are we financially going to proceed going forward, so that we have a plan so we can avoid this. Again, I will make my plea that I hope that one appears at some point to us prior to our next town meeting, because I think I said this at the last town meeting last year. But we need a plan. We need to see it in writing. We need to know the costs increased and the projections. And with that, it's a frustrating situation. And I have three kids, so I get it. But that was just, I just wanted to make that point, that we are still waiting on that plan.
Any other comments? There being, I want to call...
Mr. Moderator? Can we call for a secret ballot?
Do we have some people who want to stand up and want a secret ballot? Will you? Madam Town Clerk? What?
Are we voting, are we voting on the amendment to amend, or are we voting on the warrant title?
No, we're voting on the amendment that you made.
So we have to have two votes?
Well, if the amendment passes, then we'll go back and make the main vote.
Hold on, less.
How many people registered voters do we have tonight?
More than 110.
Mr. Moderator? The...
118. Let me have your attention, please. We're voting on... James, since you made an amendment to that, it's become the main motion. Okay? So we'll have one vote, all right? We have a secret ballot, so Madam Town Clerk, would you go ahead? What we have here, let me explain to you folks. Our town clerk has graciously worked very hard in trying to improve the way things were ran here at town meetings. He's come up with these yes and no, okay? If you want to vote yes, our vote, no, you tear it in half and you place the one that you want to vote. If you want to vote yes, place the yes in the box here, okay? If you want to vote no, put the other one in the box. Don't put both of them in the box. Or you're going to cancel eat yourself out, okay? I suggest, just take the one, I tell you what, take the one that you don't use, wad it up, lay it right up here, okay? Okay, a yes means you're voting to approve the $104,750, okay? From free cash. If you vote no, you're voting not to do that, okay? A majority. Did you get all your people out? Everybody understand this. Our town clerk will be down here to pass these out, folks. Let's start in the back, please, and if you come forward, start in the back, come down.
He loves it. That's why I'm like, you can't cut, huh? I couldn't find it out.
Are you anxiously waiting the results? After a tally by our illustrious counters as a town clerk, those in favor, a yes vote, is seventy-five. Those who voted no, is forty. The motion passes. It is a vote, not so declared. Mr. Moderator? Hold your calls until after, hold on.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Article One.
Motion's been made to reconsider Article One. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Motion's been made to reconsider Article Number One. All those in favor said, "I deserve discussion." Yes, ma'am.
What does that mean?
I tell you what's, what it's, what it's gonna mean, okay? If you, if you pass it by saying yes, then they're gonna make another motion to take the remaining money that is left and put it in stabilization fund.
So we are not touching the article we just voted on? You just wanna...
That's a done deal.
You just wanna move the rest of the free cash to stabilization?
We have to do something.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Why do you have to move the money to free cash? Why can it not stay in free cash?
I don't know, ask our accountant. That's under the suggestion of our financial team, it should be in stabilization. Because that was our original intent from May eighth, was once the free cash was certified, was to replenish our stabilization account, which was severely depleted by funding our budget.
I understand. That was your intention. I wanna know the reason why it just can't stay in free cash. It is my understanding that towns do keep money in free cash besides keeping money in stabilization.
Let me answer your question real quick. All you have to do is vote no. There's no reason that you can't leave it there. There's no reason you can't change it or move it into stabilization, okay?
Well, I thought this was also an opportunity to ask questions, so if I have to ask this question at another point, please let me know.
No. It, you're under fire, you can ask the question. All I'll do is ask the question. You, it could stay in, you could ask yes.
If, if we don't transfer that money back into stabilization, we'll be severely under the five percent threshold anyway.
Okay.
In our stabilization account.
Okay, but there's no reason why the town couldn't keep it in free cash, if it so choose. I know it's not recommended.
If we were to transfer free cash in our stabilization account, you're absolutely correct, we could keep it in free cash.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, concerned? Come up to my place. Say your name again, please.
She turned it off. Janet Davis, one fifty-eight Main Street. Um, I believe that the reason why we have to move it into stabilization has something to do with our bond rating, so if the accountant could maybe talk about that and explain that to everybody, that, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Anybody wanna touch that?
I, I think you just did. Yeah, we had a lengthy discussion on May eighth about this. And I'm sorry if you weren't there, but, um, basically, the state and federal government suggests that we maintain a balance in our stabilization account as, of a minimum of five percent of our general operating budget. And that is what any bond companies or, or any loan companies are gonna be looking at, um, if we have to go out and borrow money. So the fact that it's below that puts us in kind of a bad situation from a bonding perspective, so we, we wanna keep it above the five percent threshold so that going forward with the major capital things that we have coming up, we wanna be able to pay for.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, come down. Turn it off, please.
Brian Focker, three Marion Way. Uh, we're, we moved one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and fifty from free cash. Then we have to amend Article One to reflect that?
That will be reflected in the motion. First, you have to vote to reconsider.
Okay.
And then the new number will be reflected in the motion and we'll be voting.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else? Well, yes, sir, come back, please.
Juan Vernon from eight Hurtel Road. I just wanna vote to stop asking questions and, uh, put it through the vote.
I'm gonna start watching this now. Anyone else with a serious question, concerned? There being none, all in favor to reconsider Article One, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it, it is a vote, not so declared.
Mr. Moderator? Are you ready for me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to transfer the sum of one hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars from free cash into the stabilization account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote, not so declared.
Mr. Moderator, motion to resolve the warrant?
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All in favor of resolving the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. I never get a nay out of this. Good night, folks, thank you.